Welcome to today's city council meeting today, Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera. District, district four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silvera.
Or.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance and then presentations.
Thank you, and we'll pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for today in the city that we live in. Thank you for the people who serve it that are gathered here today. And the ones that they represent that serve faithfully. And have our best interest in mind so often, Lord. And may you give them great guidance as they discuss and they talk about the things that are at hand. As they look to our future, you give them great guidance and wisdom and discernment. About what is best for the future and for our children and for the safety of this, of this city and the well being. Thank you for the endless hours they give and the commitment that they have. We thank you for the city we get to live in because it is truly a great city. And so we give this day to you, and we thank you for it. In Jesus's name, amen.
Hey, Council, we're going to head over for the presentation. Today's presentation will be Respiratory Care, Care Week Proclamation. When I call your name, please stand. Raj Sandhu, Respiratory Care Services Manager at Emmanuel Medical Center. Please join us. Lori Au. Cardio. Excuse me, pronounced that wrong. A services manager from Memorial Medical Center. Please join us. We also have Justin Kamara from Respiratory Services Manager for Doctors Medical Center. And Bruce Kennedy from Respiratory Care Services Area Manager. Kaiser Permanente, I really do appreciate everybody being here. This proclamation is recognizing October twentieth through the twenty-sixth as Respiratory Care Week. Whereas in nineteen eighty-three, President Ronald Reagan issued a proclamation declaring the last full week in October as National Respiratory Therapy Week. And whereas doctors, nurses, and respiratory therapists care for patients with breathing difficulties due to chronic conditions like asthma. And whereas Respiratory Care Week not only shines a spotlight on efforts to reduce disabling lung conditions like asthma and chronic obstructive pulmonary diseases, also known as COPD. But the week is devoted to a panel discussion and a special events to help raise public awareness about what they can do to reduce this devastating lung condition. And whereas this week is designed to boost interest on the part of the people who might want to become respiratory therapists or other health professionals working in the area of respiratory care. And whereas Respiratory Care Week highlights the information we need to keep us breathing so we can enjoy a great quality of life. Now, therefore, may it be resolved. I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, Councilmember James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez do hereby proclaim October twentieth to twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Respiratory Care Week. Congratulations. And I know there's quite a few of you, so we do have a proclamation for each. So what I would like to do is if we can all stand and take a photo, they won't have each and one of you make a comment.
I got, I think one was missing. I just want to say thank you for recognizing Respiratory Care Week and all the respiratory therapists. There's a lot of hard work this gets done, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, I want to second his appreciation. You know, this was something that we weren't really aware of was even possible. So I definitely want to appreciate you guys recognizing our profession. You know, it brings more light to our profession and brings more pride to our profession as well, too. So, you know, I think we're all very honored to receive this and definitely appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is a real privilege, the privilege to partner with these young men and to serve our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to citizens' communications. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopt the rules on now no more than five minutes. Resolution two thousand and seven one oh six for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking any action on any matters which is not posted on the agenda. Unless it's determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address City Council and agenda items subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. We'll begin with in-person comments first. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to make a comment?
Dave Pratt of Series. I know I waste my time coming in here talking about traffic lights and, and the dog park. And but we're going to talk about the dog park. I know I'm not. It goes in one ear and out the other. Repairing, repairing the stuff. Can't get rid of the grout. You're not going to get rid of the gravel until somebody gets hurt. And, and over in the big dog side where it's all bare, no, it's the wrong soil. It gets on all the paws of the dogs and they take that home. I've several times I've had to wash my dog's paws before I allow her back into the house. But the main thing I want to talk about is there's a, there's a pool of water. Standing water that's there for days. And so we're talking about mosquitoes. I would like to see at least that area build up so that water does not stay there for long periods. What I hear about the different types of mosquitoes that are out there, some of them, once they get started, they could go for months without water. So I'd like, I appreciate it if I can at least get, get that part repaired. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? I do have a yellow card here. Amin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor, along with the respected City Council members. My name is Amin Laura. I am the CEO of a nonprofit agency which is called A and M Affordable Housing. I am here to discuss in favor of this project which is called Tuscany Homes, located just on the other side of the freeway on Whitmore Avenue. Mayor Lopez and I had a discussion about this a few months ago where this project was pretty much dead since two thousand and sixteen, if I'm correct. So he wanted to do something different and see if there was an opportunity for an investor to come in and take over this project and be able to finish it. Long story short, we were able to acquire an investment group who was willing to take on this project and finish these forty homes. We met with Jim Cruz and his team with the Stan Housing. And so Stan Housing was able to partner with us in that there's an agency called California Affordable Housing Agency. So in that partnership, we were able to finish this deal. And now twenty deserving families at least will have an opportunity to be able to become homeowners. So we have a ribbon cutting ceremony as well as some sort of press release this coming Monday at ten AM at the site. So I just wanted to be here and invite mayor and the city council staff and city staff to be there and join us in this celebration. So that's what I'm here for. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Hardip Gill. I am going to be opening the first grub up here in series along with my partners. We're having a groundbreaking ceremony, October twenty-second at ten AM. And just wanted to invite everyone. Be a ribbon covering ceremony. We've reached out to Jeff to invite the serious police department. I've reached out to Sheriff Dirk C to invite the sheriff's department. Don't have a contact for the fire department. If you guys want to invite them as well, city workers or any county workers that you feel need to be important. Also, once we open, we're projecting around February or March. We'll have four or five taco trucks, two agro fresca trucks, a barrier truck, mariscos, crepes, a donuts, and a coffee truck as well. We have room for about three or four more food trucks. You guys know anybody that's interested. We're looking for something different. Maybe somebody bring us some burgers, hot dogs, pizza, topiary, barbecue. So we have about three or four more trucks, but yeah, Tuesday, October twenty-second at ten AM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody else? Seeing none. Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Is there any emails?
We did receive one email. It's from Jin Turnbo. States, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My apologies for not being at the council meeting tonight. I'm recovering from COVID. Mayor Lopez has publicly stated with a recent mailer for his reelection that Councilmember Vera and Planning Commissioner Condit are responsible for the homeless situation and the fentanyl issue that is plaguing our great city. He also states that their extreme policies are putting series residents at risk. Mayor Lopez is using his mayoral seat to make these claims. I'm sure both Councilmember Vera and Commissioner Condit wish they had that power over the city. Because if they did, I'm sure the city of series would not look like it's looking now. In addition, Mayor Lopez is taking credit for series projects that were started over twenty years ago, all while ignoring the disaster that had happened under his watch. Mayor Lopez, could you please explain this or make a rebuttal? Thank you, Jin Turnbo.
Thank you very much. Any more emails?
No, there were no other emails.
Okay, thank you. The citizens' communication period is now closed. Moving on to, is there any conflicts of interest? Seeing none. Moving on to appointments and board of commissions. Today, we have some planning commission appointments. The Community Development Director Leah will present this item for us.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as you know, and we have two vacancies coming up on our planning commission. And Bob Ketchel and Gary Del Nero have served us a very long time and their terms will be up December thirty-first. So on August twelfth, the City Council, Council appointed the mayor and vice mayor to serve as the selection committee or appointment committee for the planning commission. And we received five applicants during the period that the application was open from August twenty-sixth to September thirtieth. And today, prior to this meeting, I believe you had interviews with five of the individuals and I will turn it over to you to discuss that and your selection for the commission.
Turn the microphone on. Yes, we had five applicants and we came up with the decision, or at least the recommendation, should I say. Me and Vice Mayor came up with two recommendations to fill the two seats. The first recommendation is RJ and the second recommendation is Dr. Dory Perez. If there is any additional comments from the council? I can go to the public first if you'd like. Let's go to the public first. Is there any comments from the public? Maybe the two that were chosen, if they are here, they're more than welcome to make a comment as well. Well, you know what? I take that back. We should, we haven't voted on it, so I'll take that back. It gets a smarter move. Is there anybody else out there who would like to make a comment on this item? Okay, bringing it back to council. Well, Rosalinda, what's going on? Are you confused? No, I, I after the fact, it's just that we didn't vote on it yet, Rosalinda, so I just wanted to make sure that she can make a comment whether or not.
I understand that, but if she wants to comment as to advocating for herself, such as I did when I ran for measure H, no sought appointment.
Either way.
Why I wanted to be appointment and why I felt it was a decision just in case someone had doubts on the council. And so that's why if she wants to advocate for herself, I'm happy to hear.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, no, there's nothing wrong with it. No, 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 that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure we're being fair. We want to bring it back. Did you get up twice? Thank you. We haven't voted yet, but she's absolutely right. If there's anything you would like to tell the council before we make our decision.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm Dory Perez. I appreciate the consideration. New to series and I'm excited to get a little bit more involved. And I was impressed that there were five applicants for two spots. I think it takes a lot to consider, you know, growth for a city. So again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. RJ. Trying to get close to that microphone. I wasn't sure if it.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff and council. So appreciate the opportunity to have a chance to support the city again and take a look at the measurements that'll be posted. I want to definitely help the city that was born, raised in and grew up in.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, now bring it back. Rosalinda, you were up.
Um, although I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Dory, I believe I admit RJ, he had applied before and I was very impressed with him. Definitely look, do not have a problem with appointing either one of these two. Based on what I'm reading on their application as well as their comments today. And I know the previous interview that we had with RJ as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to also comment on the fact that we had five applicants this time around. I know a while back you and I interviewed applicants and there was only three. When I went up for the planning commission, I believe I was the only one. So it's great to see that more people are getting involved, more people are applying, and that this information is being put out to the community. With that being said, though, I would like to make a motion to approve Dr. Dory Perez and RJ for the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Put it on. Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Congratulations to both of you. Thank you. Round of applause, everyone. Okay, so now we're going to move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar consider routine in nature and will be acted upon by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be acted, acted, accepted and acted upon by roll call, roll call vote. If there's any one of the councils that would like to, not an item to be pulled for the consideration. I see Rosalinda is at the same button or new button. Okay.
Yeah, I would like to pull item seven.
Item seven? Would you let, go ahead.
Well, number eight.
Number eight? Then we'll go to the audience. Any members of the public who would like to pull an item? Seeing none. Bring this back.
Make a motion to approve items one through six of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera. Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Item number seven, was that one yours, Councilmember?
Yes, sir. Microphone and I are not getting along tonight. Okay, so item seven I pulled just because I had some concerns. It didn't sound like downtown was necessarily involved in any of this ideas. And if, although it didn't sound like it was a bad proposal, I just didn't understand why the downtown wasn't involved in any of the decision making regarding this. And if they felt this was the best use of, I guess a million dollars worth of road improvements in their district. And that was, I guess, my concern.
Thank you for your question, Councilwoman. So I, I think it's important to note that this is just creating the project within the capital improvement program. A million dollars will be essentially seed money for the project. This project, when we look at it, I mean, in, in, we're looking at the streets that we have named. If the count, if the, if you would like us to involve the downtown, we were going to really label this after what was done on Fourth Street. Just so that we keep it consistent downtown. That's, that's really what, what the point of, of that was. I guess from a, from the standpoint of a million dollars, like I said, that's seed money. I would venture to say this project's going to cost somewhere in the range of three to five million dollars. When, when all is said and done, there is, there's a lot of work. There's a lot of ADA compliance issues. And then there's also obviously looking at parking, all of the paver work that was kind of done on Fourth Street, that type of stuff. The lighting that's going to go in. So, so it will be a big downtown revitalization project. It's not, it's not a small project by any means.
Do we know where the other four to five million dollars would be coming from then?
Most likely, all of the, all of the money would get allocated through a couple of years, essentially of measure L funding. This would all be measure L funded.
Okay, so none of it's going to hit general fund or we're not going to get started and have it not completely done as.
No, the only thing that I could say that could potentially happen is depending on costs and how they come in, we may end up phasing the project. One thing that I tend to look at is if we're going to phase a project is are we going to be able to do it essentially in consecutive years so that we can kind of keep the project going as we move through the phases? We don't want to do half the project and then, you know, say, oh, we don't have enough money and we're done. We want to make sure that we're planning that out. And I think that's an important thing you'll see is, as I bring the five-year CIP to you in the next few council meetings.
Go ahead, Mr. Casey.
The, you mentioned that you're going to work with the Fourth Street people. How about the residents on the third and was it third, fifth and sixth?
So third and fifth.
Not six.
We, we have not included sixth in this project.
Okay, and the other, the other, the follow-up on Councilmember Vera's question about funding. I read the report that says we're going to use measure L money. Is, is that, has that been cleared? Is that really what measure L money is for? The redevelopment of streetlights and sidewalks and stuff like that is.
Yes, that is, that is actually what measure L is for. It's for many different things. It's for, we can do bicycle paths, we can do sidewalks, roadways, lighting, safety, that type of stuff. We can do all of those things that are related to roads, including storm drainage. And, and those are all included within the measure.
Okay, and use, use the acronym that I'm not familiar with. The question was, you have the million dollars, it's going to, you've mentioned it's going to take several years and it's going to be three, four, maybe five million dollars. Again, where, where is that extra money going to be coming from?
So we actually get about two point four million dollars a year in measure L funds. But we also have money that has gone unspent for actually years in measure L. So we're, we're looking at all of those budgets. Right now, I'm in the process of cleaning up a bunch of projects with, with the finance department. And so we, we actually have quite a bit in measure L that is, that is available for projects such as this. And, and so you'll, you'll start to see, like I said, in the five-year capital improvement program that I'll be bringing to you, that there's actually quite a bit of measure L funding that's been, that'll be allocated for pavement resurfacing projects. Some will go to the downtown revitalization project and then any other future pavement resurfacing and reconstruction projects that we have throughout the city.
Okay, so to follow up on the question about where the money is going to be used. My son lives at the Wally Ben Road, the end of Central. And it's, it's almost comical to go visiting because you drive down Central, bum, 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 bum. You're on the county road, bum, 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 bum. So is, does that kind of project fall way behind this? I mean, this, this is an important project. But do we still have funds to finish the, the roads that are in really, really bad shape in the fairly new parts of town? Even, you know, on the industrial park area where I work, the roads horrible there. But again, it's, it's almost comical to go visit my son and my wife ask me, well, welcome is that way? Of course, I can't answer the question. And that's, you know, there's pockets in town that way where you have county roads and it's nice and smooth. And then we have city roads. It's almost embarrassing and, and, and also no sidewalks in parts of that town. So are those projects in that area of town going to be jeopardized? Again, this is an important thing, but you know, where, where do we put the priorities to? And I mentioned, you know, one of the things that brought my attention right away was no public input needed to begin. I think the public, the people that live in those areas, actually the whole city of series, because they're indirectly paying for this. There should be, there should be public input right from the very beginning before you even go up to plans. You know, you depend on the five of us and we all have different opinions. And, you know, I, I think it's important to go back and bring it before the people, let them know what you're planning on doing. And at the same time justified to the people on Central Avenue why their roads aren't going to be fixed. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me.
If I could, if I could speak to that a little bit, so I think one thing that you're going to notice when I bring the capital improvement program back to this council, that's important to note is that you talked about how do we prioritize things? So we prioritize things in the engineering department from actually a purely engineering standpoint. That's, that's what we do. We look at road conditions. We look at those types of things. And, and we actually, you know, look at what we need and what kind of funding, funding we have. We look, is it grant eligible? Is it, is it eligible for any type of grant funding? But when it comes down to the prioritization of projects, that's actually something that's an important role of this council. If we, if you guys see something that you guys would like done and we want to look at those priorities, we can definitely talk about that. That is, that is something that we are more than, we, we welcome in the engineering department because, you know, we don't, we don't see every road in the, in the city. I have a report on every road in the city, but that doesn't mean I drive every single road within the city. Sometimes there's different factors that, that come into it. Like, for instance, you mentioned, you know, the county portion of it gets nice and smooth. Some of the roads, a lot of the roads within the city are actually half county and half city. So that kind of hinders how we can actually do a road. We don't do roads in county jurisdiction. We do roads only in city jurisdiction. So all of those types of factors, factors come up. As far as the public goes, like I said, I don't, I don't have any problem talking with the public about things that they would like, would like to see. I would generally say on a standard street project where, you know, you're either infilling with sidewalk or you're replacing sidewalk that's ADA. We don't do a bunch of outreach because we're essentially repairing a road that's in disrepair. We're repairing sidewalks that are in disrepair and, and we're making something nice for, for the citizens of the city to, to drive on, to walk on, all of those types of things. We look at, is there supposed to be a bike lane on this road? So we, if there's supposed to be a bike lane, we look at the feasibility of actually putting a bike lane in, or do we need to use something like Shero's? So there's lots of different ways that, that we look at things. And, and like I said, the downtown project, if, if some public outreach is what you guys would like to see, more than willing to go meet with, with all of those owners down there that front those streets, that's, that's not a problem. I don't think that it's necessary on every single project that we do, simply because some of them are just repairing things that are in disrepair at that point in time.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes, I had a follow-up question. You had mentioned we get the two point four million a year in measure L. Is that the same money that we're using, going or planning on allocating for the service road and fixing some of the gateway area and roads and widening with the interchange and the odd ramp on service road? Because I just, again, like you said, prioritization. Yes, I understand the ADA part of it, but I also want to make sure that we're not using this, expecting the same amount of money to be used on a bunch of projects. to be used on a bunch of projects when we're still on a cap on a 2.4 million.
Um, so I, I can't tell you whether we will actually use any of that money at this point on that project in particular, because if we were to get a grant that funded the entire thing, then great, we get a grant that funds the entire thing and we don't need to worry about it. Most grants do have somewhere in the 10 to 20% match range. Um, and measure L is one of the, one of the big things, uh, that they call it is leveraging, leveraging funds. Um, is where essentially, hey, if it's 10% and, you know, it's a hundred million dollar project and we have to pitch in 10 million, but we pitch in 10 million to get a hundred million, you're, you're making 10, 10 times your money. Um, so measure L is, is used for leveraging and we leverage, uh, measure L on all kinds of different projects, uh, ATP projects, HZIP projects, CMAC projects. Um, those are all, all acronyms for grant-funded projects that are federal and state funds. Um, so if the grant that we were to get, whether it be a federal grant or a state grant requires those matching funds, yes, we would have to come out with something from most likely measure L um, to, to match those funds. But, you know, that's, that still remains to be seen as we move through the, uh, through the grant process.
Any additional comments? Members of the audience, any comments? Brandy's up. Brandy rose her hand first. You go after.
Oh, I have so much to say. I have a business downtown and I would really like to be involved in knowing what's going on. I just heard about this project. I just heard about all this happening. The last time there was improvement downtown, it affected my business for over six months because of construction. I have a class scheduled and there's no parking because there's construction. It does hurt my business. I need to know what's happening. As far as engineering goes, I think the downtown businesses need to be involved. We also do events. I'm on several committees that we do events downtown. I have no idea what this project entails. Everything that we do downtown is measured by parking spots and space and electricity and everything else. And I have no idea what these projects are. I don't know how it's going to affect our events that are downtown as well. The other thing is, um, I, from my understanding, we're not including Third Street or Fifth Street? Is that what I heard correctly?
No, Third Street is in, Third Street, it's Third Street from, uh, El Camino to North. It's Fifth Street from El Cam- El Camino to North. It is North Street from Third to Fifth excluding Fourth Street. Uh, obviously those improvements have already been done. We won't tear that up again. And it's Lawrence from El Camino to Fifth also.
So not six, just Third, Fourth and Fifth?
Correct. Uh, not Fourth at all. Fourth has already been redone.
Okay. Yeah. That's what my business is. Um, and I just kind of feel like the cart's being put before the horse because we have a meeting coming up in our downtown revitalization. But I feel like we should have learned about this first before it came to council. My opinion. Um, the other thing is I'm not sure about measure L. I read measure L last night when I heard this was going to be on the agenda. And I'm not sure this is what the voters intended for the funding for measure L. Because there's a lot of projects around Series that can be done. I want to do a little more research on it, but I would like to be notified and involved on these projects of what's happening downtown since my business is affected by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warren.
Good afternoon, Council. John Warren from the city of Series. I had an interesting conversation this afternoon or this morning with Rosa Park from Stan Cog. And, um, she kind of enlightened me as to measure L, as Mr. Beltran did this evening. And she took the liberty to pull up our council agenda tonight and review what was proposed by city staff in this matter. And she seemed to think from just what she could read, that there was consistency with what's going on. And this was proper use of measure L funds. I had, um, written down some questions prior to that and made some notes that I was going to ask tonight. But most of those things have been answered. First of all, a projected cost for the whole project. I think when anyone comes before the council with such a proposal, that there should be a projected cost in the staff notes. It should say that this thing is going to cost approximately $10 million and this is how we're going to fund it. There should be some information there. So when a citizen pulls this up on their PC at home or their phone or whatever, they have some information. They shouldn't have to wait to come to the meeting tonight to get that information. And the five million, I think probably is very correct, but I think it probably will end up costing some more. Especially if you're going to space this thing out over several years with the cost of construction going up almost on a daily basis. So that's what I have to say about this. I think it's a worthy project, but there are also some other streets and highways within our city that need some attention. Measure L money is designed to repair those projects. But as Mr. Beltran says, council does need to say, hey, I want you to work on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Uh, Dave Pratt is serious. Let's face it, you're just trying to sneak this through. I know the last two council meetings you're talking about raising the, the fees, uh, the development downtown. And apparently a lot of them are complaining, complaining they don't want to pay that because they're not getting anything for the bucks. And like she was saying, you don't have any plans. You, this is, actually should be public, dropped for the public before you spend money that like, like John Warren says, that basically people voted on that to repair the streets and stuff that we already have and you're not doing that. And what happened to, uh, apparently what happened to our, our, our interchange we were supposed to get? And, uh, Mitchell and Service, that, that went belly up to it. That's part of the reason I thought the people in Series and the others voted on the thing. They get that through, get the ACE train to come through and, and get the, uh, major projects in this town. But the last, last measure L meeting, I s- I see right now, they're looking at more, uh, at, at Faith Home, getting the bridge across the river before this thing ever gets, gets, uh, even started. There's a, they already, uh, you guys, you guys seem to have, uh, our, our state government and our federal government is, keeps writing blank checks and you guys seem to want to do the same thing. There's, there's no, just because you want to spend a million dollars just this one time, you're taking that money from the other repairs on the, on this town. Cause you're not what, there's other, uh, way I see it. You guys, uh, the last time on the budget, you guys said we were in the red. You know, are we still in the red? You were $2 million in the hole and it seems like all of a sudden you got, got all these blank checks you've been writing and, and the $500,000 gazebo and bu- and a bunch of other projects.
Is there anybody else?
Um, quick question. Is this, um, and something that has been requested by the downtown or something that's needed? Um, because I didn't, why get an answer from Brandy? Cause I know she does work or owns a business downtown. I don't know about those businesses on the specific street, if they feel that this is something that they feel is a wise investment. Cause ultimately it's, it's their front yard and I think that's most important to me.
Uh, so councilman, uh, this was actually a, a request, I believe of the council on the September 13th meeting. Uh, the first meeting in September, um, when, when we were, uh, discussing the CDRAB uh, for the downtown levy assessment. Um, and, and I'd, I had presented it there. And, and so when, when I presented doing a downtown revitalization project, um, the, it seemed that the council all concurred that, uh, I was to bring this back for your guys' consideration in addition uh, into our capital improvement program.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I was just going to elaborate on what, uh, Mr. Beltran just said. And we talked about this earlier. He pitched the revitalization CIP. We all thought it was a great idea. Hence he brought it back to this point. Remember this is just seed money to get the project started. We all know it's going to be more than that. But we have to start somewhere and this goes along with our general plan and our damn downtown expansion revitalization and the ACE train station. So every part of this makes sense for our city. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve item seven of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Casey.
No.
Councilmember Vieira.
Yes.
Said yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
And can our engineer please raise, uh, the council member's microphone? Cause I know she's, she's screaming into the microphone. It's not coming out. Please. Uh, item number eight, approving, okay, I'm sorry. Did you pull item number eight? Jim, go ahead. So do you want me to repeat the item or?
Sure. Th- thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I bring this every time I find a vehicle from Russ Ford because they're a local. You know, I've lived in Series for over 50 years and except for this year because they didn't have, they don't sell small vehicles anymore. I bought every vehicle I could because they were a local company. It was my money. Uh, I can't tell you how many trucks I bought in from Country Ford and Russ Ford, but it's my money. I make that decision. I understand, you know, in your proposal that they're an approved vendor, they're in some kind of list. Well, uh, in my business, I'm also in that kind of list. Uh, but because I'm on that list, I just don't automatically get a job. Uh, we have to bid the job. And what really brought it to my attention was the other day, I believe it was the sheriff's car, uh, a vehicle. Uh, it had a Watsonville Ford, uh, license plate thing. So I, I understand the importance of doing business with local business, very much so. And, and all of us should spend our money that way if we want to. But this isn't my money. It's the city's money, the citizens' money, and we need to spend it wisely. Uh, again, Sam, I bring this every time I have vehicle from Russ Ford. Have you looked at something? Have you, have you inquired from Watsonville Ford, from Sacramento Ford? That's why, that's why I brought it up. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, uh, can I, can I respond back to, uh, Mr. Casey?
Mr. Casey, uh, back, uh, I'm looking at the quotes for the two vehicles that we're purchasing.
Back in April 10th of, of this year, right before the budget, we requested the quotes from this dealership. So these vehicles are really available for us to obtain. So that's the reason why I, you know, uh, I'm bringing this to council with, uh, with being, uh, this local vendor. And also, uh, like you mentioned, uh, it's, it's a source wall. And a source wall is like a guaranteed price no matter where you go. So I could get this, this vehicle from Sacramento or from down in LA, it's going to be the same price. I just want to make that clear.
Okay. Rosa Linda said you answered your question. Any additional questions before I move on to the public? All right. Any members of the public have any comments or questions? I'm bringing this item back.
Make a motion to approve item eight of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Casey.
No.
Councilmember Vieira.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
On the new business, authorizing the city manager's request to unfreeze three police officer positions and approving a budget amendment. Doug, you will present the staff report, correct?
Correct, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, staff was contacted by Councilmember Martinez, uh, some time ago regarding the possibility of unfreezing some police officer positions. Uh, this has helped offset the, uh, exodus, uh, of officers leaving our city and the, uh, increase in crime. As you recall, in June of 2024, the council presented a fiscal year budget for 2024, 25. Those ballots included 10 frozen positions and five of those were for police officers. We do not have a $2 million deficit. As the council recalls, physician frozen to allow staff to present races, uh, for, uh, the police department, which was 13% and for the dispatchers, which was 12. Since that time, staff has seen an increase in personnel migrating to other departments and the number of active officers has drastically fallen. Staff is asking council to unfreeze an additional three positions to help raise the number of officers on the street following. The unfreezing of three police officers positions would impact the budget since these positions are not funded in the current budget. Staff is asking for council to approve the use of general fund reserve funding for these positions. And staff is seeking approval from the council to transfer the following monies for general fund reserves to our current budget. The overall amount for the reserves is $699,897. Currently, general fund reserve is, uh, 6.1 million or 21% of our operating budget. This transfer of funds from the reserves would leave us an 18% allowance or $5.4 million in reserves after the transfer. City managers now asking for, uh, the council to approve unfreezing those three positions and remove, uh, changing, transferring the funds from the general fund reserves to our operating budget.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. We'll move on to public comment. The public comment is now, period is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to make a, a comment on this item? Mr. Warren, welcome.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak on this matter. Um, currently, as was stated, there are approximately four members of our current police department that are contemplating leaving and going to other agencies or a different line of work. And unfreezing three positions that were previously frozen of the five is just going to make this number jump to seven spots that are unfilled. My thought in the matter would be to have the city, our police department, fill those four vacant positions that are available now first. And then if those positions are filled, come back to the council and ask to unfreeze those other three at that time. It may take a year to fill those four positions. It may take six weeks. We don't know that. Uh, in this calendar year, there is going to be four more city council meetings. One this month, two next month, and one in December, if I'm correct in my thought on that matter. There's no need at this time to have seven unfilled positions in the police department. There's no need to transfer $700,000 from the reserves into this current budget until that money is actually needed. So my thought to you is hire four more people. And once those positions are filled, come back to the council and discuss this matter again about unfreezing some positions. Cause my guess is probably when you get all four of those slots filled, one or two of them are going to say, hey, the grass is greener. Or some other people that are here currently may say the grass is greener and you're going to be short positions again before you even get those filled. And it won't be necessary to unfill these three slots. That's my thought. Give it some consideration, please. I think hiring police officers as soon as we can is a big plus for the city. And I hope that that can be accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Uh, councilmember Rosa Linda, she had her button pressed first before Mr. Councilmember Martinez. Anybody else in the public? Seeing none. Jump, jumping the gun here. Bring it back to council. There's no hands raised. I can see it right here. Thank you for checking. So Rosalinda, you'll be first.
Thank you. I didn't want to jump in line in front of anyone. I guess my concern is, one, what are the requirements for reserves? Two, do we have any applicants such as, besides the four that are potentially leaving? Are there still more applicants than that? Are these four police officers, traffic detectives? What kind of positions are we looking for? Just so I, and is, those are my questions for now.
Chief Ferry, you want to take this?
Yeah, of course. So currently, we actually have six lateral officers waiting to be hired at this time. They've already been vetted through an application process and are actually in a various form of the background process. It does do us good to hire people that we have. When we don't hire people, then we're back filling those positions on overtime, which has cost in the city a whole time and a half of an officer's position to fill all of those shifts, not to mention it's creating burnout on the officers that we do have because they're constantly working without days off. So I feel it's very important to hire these positions. All of the positions start at a police officer level, which would mean patrol. Right now, we are vacant. Some positions, like our traffic position, is back to patrol. We're gonna be down a detective position that we're not planning on backfilling. But as these positions come into the department and get integrated back to patrol, then our seasoned patrol officers then will get moved into the specialty assignments such as detectives in traffic to backfill those positions. I hope that answered all of your questions at this time.
One question I do want to ask, because I know on the budget, we did reduce, I guess, the budget approximately the $53,000 a month in overtime that the police are working. Has that increased some or decreased the burnout in some of the excessive hours they were working? That was, I'm assuming, causing some of them to leave by working the excessive hours?
So the overtime is a whole nother subject. It was at $56,000 a month. We have not been able to stay within that $56,000 a month as of yet. We've exceeded it every single month. It is not enough. That's how much overtime that we are working when we have a decrease in officer positions. And currently, we normally run three eleven-hour shifts on each squad. We've currently moved to two twelve-hour shifts on each squad because we're down so many officers, and that's the only way that we can backfill the shifts to try to minimize overtime. But again, every officer that's working those twelve-hour shifts is built in with at least one hour of overtime. We have been doing our part in several ways to cut overtime. We've worked with the DA's office trying to minimize court time. We're having officers placed on call for court instead of showing up to court because it's cheaper, and a lot of different areas like that. All overtime is being approved through watch commanders and command staff. Training has been cut, so we're not cutting or spending as much overtime on training. We're doing our part, but when we're down so many officers, it really impacts because we have to backfill to keep minimum staffing. And that backfill with overtime ultimately costs us more money than it does to have the positions, you know, on the force.
Absolutely. So is the six even gonna be enough, or do we even have enough applicants? If we were to even raise it to ten, would we even have the amount of applicants that would clear the requirements and be qualified and ready to be on the streets? Because we can change it to any magical number, but the question is, do we really have the adequate personnel in the community to fill those positions?
Six will, if these three are unfrozen, that's gonna, it's gonna help tremendously. And again, I'll take every little bit that I can. It should help to move our shifts back to the four eleven shifts on each side and to put the traffic officer back in traffic and the detective backfill as well. What this will not do, this will not allow us to do our street crimes unit like we would like to. That would require more positions for that. This will just get our staffing back up to safe levels in order to reduce overtime and get our shifts back to the four eleven shifts.
Now, the street crimes, though, was funded through a different. It wasn't through the general fund. My understanding was through the state funds from the allocation from the relocating
Measure H.
Back to the county. Correct.
Crimes was through Measure H, yes.
Would we be able to use that funding to even bring back one officer that may be able to focus, or detective, to focus on just the street crimes? While we still deal with the other personnel issues, which is nationwide or statewide, because we see it even, you know, at the doctor's office, we see it at the college, we're seeing it at all levels. But I'm trying to find ways where we can still meet the needs of the community and still be physically conservative and smart in our financial decisions.
Yeah, that would probably be a question, maybe for finance. I know that Measure H positions are allotted in other ways. I'm not certain where the money's allotted.
Councilmember Vera, so currently Measure H funds ten positions right now. They're funding ten officers. So this, unfreezing those positions is our steps going forward to try and get back to full staffing so we can go after this free crimes unit going into early next year, hopefully. To make that happen, but we can't do it all at once. We're gonna have to ramp up because we don't have that many train officers. So that's why we're going after additional personnel so we can kind of honestly train them, because once we bring them on, even when they're lateral, it's gonna take thirty to forty-five days to get emaculated to the city a serious way.
So it's not funded through AV109, this CCP money?
That's a different fund.
Right, but I thought the CCP funds was what was looking at on the county level by using the AV109 funding to bring back the streets team, street crimes team, which was discussed at the county level. That's the only reason why, because we're a part of that discussion. And so that's where they said they were working on a series to bring it back using that CCP money.
Yeah, that's a whole nother project that we could work on when we go to bring back street crimes unit. Yes, correct.
We wouldn't be able to use that now to at least bring back one person. Okay.
No, that money can't even be, it can't even be approved until next July. The application process on that, I believe, has to be submitted by April first, and then they vote on it around July for approval, and I plan to put in for that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Rosalind actually asked a lot of great questions there. Mine was gonna be, you start broaching on those lateral transfer positions coming over. Unfreezing these gives you an opportunity to go out and start accepting applications for trainees, for sending people to the academy, something that we don't typically do until those positions are vacant. So by unfreezing these, this puts you ahead of the curve, allows you to recruit, get people in, continue to grow that culture that everyone speaks about, and also would give us the ability to get our officers the rest that they need to get more officers on the street and continue to protect our community. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, that's correct. And even right now, we have two open vacancies in the police department. So unfreezing these three would allow me to hire these three right now, which is five. We don't have four. And I can't run my department based off of what people think are gonna happen. I mean, although that is on my radar, I have people, you know, that say things all the time, you know, I'm gonna leave or I'm gonna leave, and they've been saying that for the last five years, and they're still here. So I can only act on the positions that I actually have in front of me, and right now, I have two vacancies that I need to fill, and these three unfrozen ones would then give me three additional to put my staff levels back up, which would be tremendous for me, yes.
Thank you, chief. So, you know, I brought this to the attention of Doug, and we were able to work together. This is something that's very important to me, getting more officers on the street, getting more officers staffed so that the officers working have an opportunity to rest, have time with their family, protect our communities. As many of you know, I do have three young sons, so making sure that our public safety is staffed adequately and patrolling our neighborhoods and keeping our streets clean and safe is something that is very important to me, as well as the other four members of this council. So thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine's pretty simple. You know, my pet peeves have always been about communication, and for the longest time, our audit, you know, we haven't completed the audit yet. We've talked about spending money here and there, and I don't favor transferring money from the general fund or the whatever reserve until we have a complete audit in place for 2022, 2023. Our audit, you know, anyway, we need to know absolutely positively where we stand financially. A few minutes ago, our city manager mentioned we're not $2 million in debt. Well, I can say whatever I want. You know, at home, we have the same kind of conversations. But we need to complete the audit before we talk about spending more money on anything. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any additional comments or questions? Believe this is an action item. If I haven't opened up to the public, let's do that now. I did. Okay, double checking, just in case there's initial comments. With that being said, I bring this back for motion.
Move to approve number nine on the agenda.
No, second.
We get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Congratulations, chief. I hope this helps. Moving on to a discussion item. Those leaf and limb collection services addition and program information. This update is by Sam.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Tonight, my tonight's presentation for the leaf and limb collection service addition and program information update. In 2020, City Council approved a rate adjustment for garbage service fees to fund the addition of an organic collection service as mandated by the SB 1383. Additional pragmatic revisions were made to the franchise agreement with Berlotti disposal to reflect new service structure changes. Among these, among these was the revision of the leaf and limb program schedule from a year round to a three-month seasonal service from October 1st to January 9th each year. At the July 22nd City Council meeting, staff were directed to explore ways with Berlotti disposal to expand the seasonal leaf and limb collection program. Staff met with the Berlotti and was informed that the cost to extend the program for an additional three months through March 31st of each year would equate to $94,000. Berlotti has offered an alternative option that would provide a method for residents to dispose a large amount of green waste debris during the program's off-season months. Service would provide, would provide a two-yard bin delivered to the customer at the cost to the customer of $45. The actual cost of this service is $100, but the city share would be compensated through the illegal disposal fee that were built into the new rate structure implemented in 2020. The program would be administered by, through Berlotti as a separate service, and new monetary transaction would be facilitated through this city, for their city staff. At this time, I'm asking for directions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. The public comment is now, period is now open. Is there anybody in the chambers who would like to make a comment? Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Councilmembers John Warren, City of Series. I think this is a good alternative rather than increasing our current garbage bills and things like that, $94,000. If you divide that by 12,000 customers, that's about eight to $10 per person in an increase. And not everyone really needs to pay that. There's gonna be other increases coming in the near future that we're going to have to pay, whether we like it or not, just to keep the city going forward. My only comment here is that the collection bin that Berlotti is gonna provide a customer in place before the customer cuts down all the bushes and trees and things like that and throws them in the street. What I can see happening is a big pile develops, and then someone in the city sees it and brings it to the attention of the city, and then the customer is told, hey, you've got to make arrangements with Berlotti, and it goes on and on and on sometime before the pile of trash actually gets removed, and it maybe will never be removed. So I think it's really important that the public be educated, know this is available, know they gotta pay 45 bucks, which, if you've got to remove a big tree or something like that, that's a pretty reasonable fee to have it hauled away. So the bin should be in place before the work project begins. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the public?
Dave Pratt, a series. I see, I see the same ones over and over do this, do this. And it seems like they do it all year long. It's not just in the fall when everybody should be doing their, doing all this. And a lot of them, I find, like I've said before, now that they got three garbage cans out there, they use, they don't recycle anything. They put everything, mix it all up, and they expect the city to pick it. I've seen, sometimes I've seen some houses, they just, there's just a small pile of grass. They mow their lawn, they dump it out there. I talked to one lady. She says, she expects the street sweeper to clean it up. I see a lot, a lot of places, they blow everything down the street, but they leave their cars parked that when the street sweepers do come through, can't even clean it up after them. Basically, I think these people ought to be notified. And I think, I think it should be up to them to be paying the extra money to, out if they're not gonna do it in season, to have them pay for it first. So why, why should the whole city have to pay for these few that don't wanna, wanna, wanna be conformed to the whole city? Let's make them pay for this pickup. I find, you know, I even find when I walk the canals, that some of these people along there, they don't even take the stuff out front. They just dump it over the fence. I find that in a lot of places. Thank you.
I do see one hand raised.
Gene Akley, your mic is muted.
Am I on?
Yep.
Yes, we can hear you.
You're Gene Akley, series. Boy, I'm sorry. I'm not there tonight. This whole thing with leaf and limb, it's got so out of hand, it seems like things are put forward for another position to try to, to leave some other issues that haven't been corrected in the, behind them. I had a conversation over a month ago with Tony Cordell at Public Works about what's still out there in educating people. And I know we're not gonna educate everybody, but the bin thing, it's fine. But you're gonna have to take quite a while to get up to that point. And in the meantime, before that, there's still stuff in the streets. There's stuff over around my neighborhood that's been there for almost five months. Now, we're talking to Public Works. There was supposed to be a process to where they were going to notify these people, and they probably did. I don't know. And give them a time factor, and then after that, so many times going back, they would get citations. But I don't know if that's working correctly or not, but evidently not. Do they get Berlotti to pick it up and then send them a bill? That seems like the best thing to do right now before they get to the bin thing, but there's that, that percentage of people, and we all know, you got the good neighbors that know you're not supposed to put things in certain cans. They they've practiced for a long time. They know you're not supposed to throw stuff. It's common sense. You know, you're not supposed You know, you're not supposed to throw stuff in the street. You know, when I was a kid, you didn't throw the tree trimmings and stuff in the street. Of course, back then you could burn leaves in the street. But of course, we can't do that today. But, you know, just like the police department thing just a few minutes ago, we have to go at one thing at a time instead of dumping something else in on top of it. We haven't corrected the the leaf and limb pickup thing and found a solution to it yet. And now we're up to putting, you know, an idea with bins, and it's a great idea. But I don't think it's probably appropriate right now until we commandeered the problem that we have presently, and that's cleaning up the streets that are still messed up out there. Does Public Works have an answer of of what's going on with this this long term dumping of branches and leaves in the street that haven't been corrected for months on end? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Can I give you a minute to reply to Mr. Yeakley?
Sure, sure. If you have some information, yeah.
Mr. Yeakley, I just wanted, I'm not sure exactly how this is being reported. I mean, we have a website that that city residents would go on and 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 address these issues. And now that the leaf and limb started October first, we're into the second week. I met with Berlotti last week, and they're on full force to have the city clean as fast as they can. But, you know, we have, we have miles and miles of roadways throughout the city, so it's going to take time. We've been educating the public for many years now. I mean, it's on social media, it's on our city website, it's it's on our flyers. I mean, we're making many attempts to educate the public, but it's taking time. It might take a little bit longer. But as far as the pickup, that's it's it's in the work and it should happen. And and I would say, I mean, we have three months, we have until January ninth to to clean up. So I'm hoping that we could tackle all of these.
But what's happened in the meantime is, just like Tony Cordell told me, that they went out to these neighborhoods, these long term things. I mean, there's one here, and I I don't know, I sent it to the to I think I sent one to Tony, but the city manager and stuff, what if, there's a pile down the street from me that's bonfire qualified. So if a spark by some fluke thing, some kids, they do all kinds of stuff, started a fire and ignited a home, wouldn't the city be liable? But when Tony Cordell told me that they were coming out and knocking on doors and letting residents know you got this this big pile out here, and they've been here for months on end, what good is it going to do with Berlotti coming in here when she's telling me that the city knows and they've contacted them and they're going to cite them for it? They haven't learned nothing at that point. If the city comes and picks it up, but it seems like that's what's happened. They've prolonged this thing, and now you have these homes that stuff's been there for months and months. And hasn't been corrected. The city manager got my email. And?
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I respond back to Mr. Yeakley?
This time is up.
Okay.
Move on. We have another hand that's been raised.
Zoom user TC, your mic is unmuted.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Tony Cordell. I apologize, I couldn't be there this evening. I actually had an injury recently. But I'd just like to provide some insight in response to Mr. Yeakley's comments. I had responded to his email, but unfortunately, it sounds like he did not receive it. But I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on what the enforcement process that we had begun to do in the last few years. As you'll see noted in in the staff report. With the enforcement process, what we are doing is we're actually putting responsibility back on the homeowners and the people that put the piles in the street to pick it up themselves. It's actually been fairly successful from what we've seen. And that's just a matter of repeat citations. But what we are doing with processes is we will go out, we will provide them with a courtesy notice. And then on the second, there's a lot amount of time for them to to correct the problem and pick up the pile. And then we go back, and then they are actually cited with a penalty fine. We still do not pick up the piles. We will continue to enforce that through the different stages. But ultimately, it is responsibility of the person that stood there because it is an illegal disposal at that point. We spent the last three years with heavy education from the audience. But we have in the law. Now, we are currently in leaf and limb season, so we're definitely going to see the piles in the streets because it's it is collection season. But I think that this is a good alternate that's being alternate option being proposed simply because it doesn't raise the rates for everybody and also we, they are going to be utilizing the illegal disposal funding too, so that will help with that, offset the cost for the city. Again, I apologize, I'm not there in person with you, but if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer too.
Thank you very much. Any waking, so no additional hands or emails? Okay, now I'll bring it back to council. I'm not too sure who pushed the button first, so I'll start with Rose Linda.
Who pushed their button first either? I guess mine is, my question is, do we have a tiered or some kind of rate regarding annual increases that I'm assuming we're going to get because I'm assuming their employees are going to want annual raises and increase in benefits and stuff. As well as otherwise, we're going to drain that account fairly quickly depending on the demand. And I just want to make sure we set up for that. And then the second, I guess, question or issue is regarding the bin. You stated it was a two yard bin, which, I mean, I kind of Googled a little bit about what they look like. But then it comes down to, you know, is it something they can walk in if they have something heavy? Is it going to require them to be able to pick up something heavy and throw over their, you know, shoulder or height limit? Those are kind of things, especially with some of us who, such as myself, that have, you know, an impin shoulder and have a harder time lifting things above, you know, eye level. That would be an issue for myself. So that's where I kind of want to look and make sure that it's something that's actually feasible for those that do have a lot of leaves or stuff that get a lot that get blown in from the park at my house and ways to accommodate those individuals as well.
Yeah, Mr. Ms. Councilman Vera, the the leaf and the leaf and limb, the rates, I mean, if we if we go with the ninety-four thousand dollars for the additional three months, we're looking at proposition two eighteen. And that would be about that the increase would be about seventy to seventy-one cents a a rate increase per per account. So that's where it would fall under. The the forty-five dollar rate that that the customers is is in is is it it the customers is paying and the and the and the fifty-five thousand fifty-five hundred fifty-five dollar rate that the city is compensated to make up for that hundred dollar bin delivered would be coming out of the illegal dump. Right, that was that was like my staff report said, that was built into the rate structure back back in two thousand twenty.
Yes, I understand that, and I would hope that we're using the legal dump to address some of the illegal dumps like mattresses TVs and stuff that's being abandoned out in our country area. I'm not looking at a rate increase or even talking about Prop eighteen or anything like that that's going to affect the taxpayers because I think our utility bills are high enough. I think my concern is if, depending on the need and the demand, if people are going multiple times, are we going to drain that account where we no longer have the funding to deal with mattresses and other debris that's left out and abandoned in our city couches? We see a lot of that in certain areas. And I just want to make sure we have adequate funding to address all of the needs and not just the leaf and limbs because that we could easily drain that account quickly.
Okay, that's something I need to discuss with Berlotti and see how far we could take that program if we if we implement if we implement the two yard bin. Yeah, I don't have those numbers, Ms. Vera.
Okay, and then the bin.
And and the bin size, I mean, that's the two yard is the is what we use for commercials. And we do ask the public to trim the trim the leaf, I mean, the the limbs trim to a certain to a certain length and and throw them where but we're not definitely, we're not accepting any or Berlotti will not accept any tree tree trunks, you know, large tree trunks. It'll be if everything's had to be trimmed to a certain size, so they would be able to accept it.
Can you just quickly review what the current pickup information is or if Tony's still online? So that way the audience knows, because I think they come on the week of the recycle week, at least I've seen it in my neighborhood that they're coming the week of my recycle week, the day after garbage day, but I just want to verify so everyone knows on the record.
I think I have the.
See, I see her hand up, so I'm guessing she may or may not have it. She does. I see her hand up.
Hi, Sam. Did you want me to go ahead and answer this?
Yeah, go ahead, Tony.
Okay, yes. So the leaf and limb is the leaf and limb, while it's running on during the season, is picked up the day after you're recycling. So it's every two weeks. And typically, the street sweeper will come in the following day and sweep the streets. So it is on a two week schedule, the same same the day after your recycling bin is collected.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you. I think those are all my questions for now.
Okay. Next person will be Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. So this program or one like it's been a long time coming since we've been having these leaf and limb issue discussions forever in series. I think it's finally great that we're going to allow the citizens to pay the bill if they're going to use the the service. This was not thought about lightly, and along a lot of discussions went into this. The fact that like Rosalind is worried about that fun running down. The idea is to get these people in the city that regularly have illegal dumps and put their stuff out when they're not supposed to to abide by our laws and our codes and to stop doing that. And once we get to that point, if we ever do, if any of us that are sitting up here ever still around, then I guess that's something we'll have to to look out in the future. But now gives us the ability to keep our streets cleaner than they are now and have only the people that are you need the system to use the system. We're always going to have illegal dumps and people that circumvent the system. That's never going away. And the fact that in two thousand twenty, we changed the rules, and now there's fines and a fee structure to penalize those people gives us the ability to make this off time pickup a reasonable cost for the city. Though this, in my opinion, is a no brainer. I would much rather for any city service charge people that just the people that are using it as opposed to raising the fees for everybody. Thank you. And thank you, Tony, for clearing up all that information. This is what we've needed for a long time, so I support it wholeheartedly.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sounds like a lot of my concerns had been addressed. Councilmember Vera asked quite a few questions. I was going to discuss the two yards enforcement. One question I have is who would pay for the communication to get this information out to the public? Would it be Berlotti or the city?
We we looking into like having a public outreach, just to let the just like the residents know that they were available to call Berlotti to request those bins to be delivered to their site. So it'll be it'll be administered by the Berlotti, and we had we had nothing to do with it.
Thank you, sir. And then this forty-five dollar fee would be in lieu of what we currently have now, it wouldn't be the three months at the end of the year. And then they would go to the forty-five dollar fee they'd be paying to get the two yard bin?
Correct.
So then every resident in the city of Series that has a Christmas tree in January is going to need to pay forty-five dollars to get rid of their Christmas tree?
Well, if they if they cut it in pieces, they could use the green bin.
Okay, so we're going to ask senior citizens, older individuals, people that don't have the capacity or the tools or the equipment needed to cut their tree up to cut their tree up or pay an additional forty-five dollars?
Yeah, yes.
And then my last question is that this has a rate increase and additionally, you would have to pay that forty-five dollar fee if you wanted to use it. So what we're doing here is increasing the rates for everyone citywide, requiring people that would need to use the service to pay an additional fee, and then taking it away from people that that do use it during the winter months, just if I understand correctly.
Well, this is this the fee. If you request it, you're going to be able, you need to pay the fee directly to Berlotti.
So it sounds like we're putting a lot more pressure, a lot more requirements on the right pair. They need to do more. They need to know more. They need to have tools to take care of things for themselves. We've got people on fixed incomes that can't afford small rate increases or paying a forty-five dollar fee. So I couldn't support adding more requirements, putting more steps, putting more opportunity for somebody to slip up down the line and get a fine or have to pay more money to use a service that we should never have given away in two thousand twenty in the first place. So thank you.
This is Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I think it's worth trying, and I can tell you that at my house, we did some trimming before the leaf pickup time, and I put in the back of my pickup, and it costs eighty-five dollars. So forty-five dollars is a lot cheaper. So it's worth trying. See how it works. There's some obvious concerns. I'm paying forty-five dollars and my neighbor across the street fills it up with stuff that's not even legally supposed to be there. What do I do, you know? But at least we can try, and this doesn't go into effect until after the the normal pickup time. But that would be my major concern is that I have it in front of my house and it doesn't say, you know, this is for Jim Casey only. And people just throw stuff in there that's not supposed to be there, then I get stuck with it, probably a fine, huh? But again, I I support the effort. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, you had, yeah, go ahead. You're up.
Couple of things. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sam. There's no rate increase happening right now. This would only be forty-five dollars for people that choose to do it.
Correct, yes.
And Jim, put a lock on yours. They are all lockable. So if you get it delivered to your home, put a lock on it, nobody can put anything in it, and when Berlotti picks it up, take the lock off. Well, I mean, they're going to cut your lock in your backyard and go in there too, if you're worried about them cutting the lock. But man, there's always a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Good question, Sam. Does this take away from the already free dumps that we get already?
Uh, what's that, Mayor?
Does it take away from the free dumps that we already get already?
No, it shouldn't.
So that so this fee would only be after the season?
Yeah.
You do pickups?
Correct, yeah.
So from January ninth to October first, you could go online on Berlotti, make an appointment. They'll drop the bin off, you fill it up, they'll come and get it when you're done. And October first, you start our regular city sponsored leaf and limb.
So it's it's like an offseason.
Yes, correct.
It's to give everybody the opportunity to continue to do pruning or whatever they're going to do. And only those that are doing it pay for the service.
And how much was in that fund again? I know you guys had already said.
How much is in the funds?
For for the the illegal dump, yeah.
The illegal dump, I believe it's a dollar per account.
Okay.
Yeah, that's that's what the Berlotti collects.
It's their fee already.
Yeah, that's part of the agreement.
One other addition to that, Sam, could you tell me this, or maybe Tony? The penalties that people pay on their utility bills for these fines that she was talking about, that goes in that fund too as well, right?
That I would have to discuss with finance. I'm not sure exactly how.
I think it does, but I'm not absolutely sure either, but maybe that's.
Yeah, utilities collects it, so I'm not sure where where would that go.
Well, it seems like it should go into that fund if it's a penalty.
I totally agree.
Not picking up their leaf and limb.
Yep, I agree.
One last question. On the offseason, I'm calling it offseason. Normally, I would call in and I would, and if I didn't have a free dump, they would charge me an additional fee. What is that fee prior to this? So if I already used up two of my free dumps originally prior to this, passing this today, what would they charge me normally?
Normally, for an illegal dump?
For any dump. No, no. For any dump. No, 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 I'm not saying like a pickup.
Or a pickup?
Yeah. Uh bin. Is it is it like an offset?
There's no, there's no offset. I mean, if you if you if you have an illegal dump in front of your property.
Not not an illegal dump. No, if I if I purchased a bin.
Okay.
Is it the same price it was before than it is now, or are they giving us a discount?
No, it's 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 forty-five dollars. That's what they're charging.
Forty-five dollars. Okay.
There's no discount. I I don't think there is uh. You gotta remember one thing, Mayor. I mean, we with the the city is paying fifty-five dollars on top of the forty-five.
Also, we're covering the offset?
Yes.
Doug, you pressed your button.
And one more thing, I think you're talking about bulky item pickup.
I actually am, yeah.
This is this is different. This is green waste in the bin, only green waste. This is not put everything you have on the block, including refrigerators and matches.
No, no.
I wanted to make sure because I was confused.
That's that's the service that Birladi is offering. You have two uh bulky items uh uh per year that uh that they would pick up. Like um a refrigerator or so.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, that's different.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Doug, you said you had a.
The Vice Mayor already answered and.
Oh, yeah, okay. And then Tony, has she raised her hand again, or is that?
Yes.
You go ahead.
Can you can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I just wanted uh to clarify a few things. So um as far as the Christmas tree pickup, Birladi still does offer that um through the after Christmas and through the end of leaf and limb collection, and that's just by placing your full tree in the, you know, in the street, and they will collect it, and that goes through January ninth. Um you don't have to cut it up or do any of that, so they still still do offer that service. Um I did wanna clarify a little bit about. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Make sure. I'm sorry, never mind. Go ahead.
Yeah, so they do provide the Christmas tree collection. And that until January ninth, when the leaf and limb season ends. Um but I did wanna clear clarify a little bit about the illegal disposal fee. It's actually built into the rate. It was built into the rate, so it's a part of there's not a separate fund for that dollar that it goes into. Um I mean, the dollar that's goes into the rate, um so it's not counted for separately. It's just built into the rate, and that was to cover the cost for them to do our legal our legal disposal pickup. Um from our conversations with Birladi, it does not sound that like that would affect it, um but that that was there were sufficient funds for them to cover, continue to do that, offer that as well as um um apply them into the program to offset the cost, because it's it's a total of, I think, a hundred dollars um to be able to do the collection, to offer this service, and so forty-five would go to the person subscribing to that service, and the additional fifty-five would be covered by our our illegal disposal fees that are already being paid.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Tony, while you're still on the line, maybe I asked Sam this question. Would you know where the fines that are put onto people's utility bills? Where does that money go?
So I would defer to Shannon, because we just implemented this and there was some discussion. I believe it doesn't have its own separate account. It does go in the city, and I'm gonna let her correct me on this. Um but the city has a, and it is a general fund account that for fines and and for all utility fines that it goes into. So it's not separated essentially. Um but we did have discussion about adding funds that we can account for how much in the activity that that's being that's taking place. But again, I'd love for better for you.
Yeah, so just to expand on um what she said. Um so garbage um revenue goes in the general fund, so the fees for illegal dumps or penalties would also go in the general fund. Um if you wanted to do a special designation like um we did for the police firing range, we could do something like that. Um but that would be my best suggestion at this point.
Thank you. That seems like something we may wanna look into in case this fund that we're all talking about, this one-dollar fund, gets to the point where there's not very much in it. The people that are paying these fines that aren't going along with the program and doing what we're asking them to do, and then supplement uh the cost of people that are doing it the right way and calling and having these bins delivered and picked up. I I would think that was something that we should look into. Okay, at some point in time, I'll ask for a referral on that for a future meeting.
So this item is was for discussion only, so there's no action to be made?
Right.
Any additional comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, uh can can I clarify something that Ms. Vieira was asking about the uh?
Sure.
The, you know, the uh the two-yard bin and the uh the issues that people might have lifting stuff up. Uh per the Birladi agreement I have in front of me here, stumps or branches exceed six inches in diameter or four feet in length. That's what they need to be. Uh palm fawns, uh yucca leaves and bamboos. Uh that those are not allowed, and also the dirt, rock and trash, that is not allowed in the bins, so I just wanted to be clear on uh what goes in those bins.
Mr. Mayor, so we need direction from the council, exactly what you want us to bring back, and we can implement that.
Everything you just heard.
Sam, are you are you clear on what to bring back?
Uh whatever options uh uh council needs to bring back, I'll be more than happy to put that together and bring it back and later on.
To negotiate a system with Birladi from the end of leaf and limb to the beginning in October first, a system where you can, the consumer can, make an appointment with Birladi for a bin, bring it back, pick it up, and the city will supplement the cost of that with fifty-five dollars. Do you bring that, please?
Okay, yeah, sure.
And an attachment to that, can you bring in the possibility of if this is even the right place for fines that people are charged because of illegal dumps, et cetera, to go in the fund to support this?
Okay, yeah, we can make that uh put that in a SaaS report.
Thank you.
And and then I'll double-check with Birladi on the the not to exceed a certain budget amount uh uh, you know, for this program.
Is the council okay with that? Well, it's that for Martinez. Okay. So now we're going to move on to council member referrals. Council members request to have an agenda item placed on the future agenda pursuant to chapter two, city council meetings, J eight. City council member referred the uh determination of items on the agenda. We have one. And this is removing city council stipends, health benefits, training and travel. This was referred by council member Casey. You may present the item.
Want to speak?
Wait, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh when I first was elected to the city council, uh I didn't understand a lot of things. I'm still learning. Uh but one thing I I did find out going to different League of City meetings is that uh we're for the city our size, we're compensated very well. Uh I think in August the twelfth, not all the stipends are listed here, but on August the twelfth, Ms. Rogers asked the mayor, what's the person who developed funds? What what's that money used for? Well, I found out early on in my uh perm, uh I was contacted about ordering T-shirts. These shirts here, that's why I wore this one here. I'm very proud to wear this shirt. So I waited and waited and waited and waited, waited. I never got a bill, so I called and asked, and no, that's this purchase of this shirt i- is part of our personal development. That's what part of that money is used for. I think it's not so much eliminating all the stipends. The health insurance issue is pretty sensitive to me. Uh again, when I first was elected, uh I signed up for it and I had it for, I think, a month and uh one of my siblings and um I um we were in where I work, we were talking about insurance and uh I said, well, I have, I finally have insurance. And I I was reminded, was I elected receive benefits for myself, or was I elected to try and prove the city of Series? Uh I'm I'm not suggesting that um there's no training, no travel. I'm only suggesting that we found out at very most of these meetings, well, it's already budgeted. It's already budgeted. I I'm suggesting that uh like we have several council members, several staff people going to the uh League of City conference in Long Beach. I'm not suggesting that that not happen. I'm just only suggesting, do we have the funds today to make that happen? Again, referring back to private business, uh one of the things that we do, we used to do, when things were good, we go to conventions two or three times a year. Well, now, because of the economy and the private sector in my particular profession, now those conventions are Zoom meetings. Uh and the health insurance issue is uh pretty sensitive to me in that I I don't participate in it. Uh I'm not suggesting, I am suggesting rather that July first, when it's time for renewal, that somehow or another, if a council person wants to take the benefit of having the health insurance is provided by the city, there are means in which that council person can pay for it themselves. Um that's kind of been in in a nutshell, uh Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for allowing me to present this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment period is now open. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, John Warren from the city of Series. This is a really, really touchy subject because it's a benefit, obviously, that some of the members of the council now are participating in. And approximately the premiums, I think, are about two thousand dollars a month, which is very high, I believe. And the figure that I have heard, I don't have any personal knowledge of, is that it costs the city about a hundred thousand dollars a year to provide health insurance for our council members. When a person runs for public office, it should not be for that particular reason. As a private citizen, they probably should have made arrangements for their own personal healthcare insurance through another venue, whether it's their employer, their retirement, Medicare, uh so forth and so on. Most employers outside of the city of Series uh require premiums to be paid from their employees. Uh in some cases, the premiums can be as high as a couple thousand dollars a month or life insurance or for like or medical insurance, and maybe some even include life insurance. I know when people retire from public service, such as the city of Series, that type of insurance is on their own. It's not provided any longer. I'm fortunate with the state of California that I have healthcare benefits that are paid for in my retirement year. It's a very, very expensive item. But I don't think it's something that our city should be providing people that are not employees. I know that the council people feel that they are city employees, but they're actually elected. There's a election coming up and people will elect these. These gentlemen sitting here on left and right are staff members, they're city employees, and if their benefits package allows for medical care, that's what's supposed to take place. It's not something that I think the council should provide for themselves. And I know it would be a tough issue if it's voted on, and it probably won't be voted on tonight. It's something maybe that will be considered by a new council or maybe possibly some new members in the near future. But these things should be considered. You people are elected officials. You're not a city employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there any other members that would like to speak on this item?
I back up everything he said. You spend more time talking about the garbage and trying to get forty-five dollars out of the poor people than you do trying to build up our police department. Some way or another, you guys are really screwed up.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Emails? Hands raised?
No emails, no hands raised.
Okay. Bring this item back. For any council discussion, Rosalinda?
Thank you. Um yes, you're correct, a very touchy subject. Um but the state laws, insurance is required. Um so I think by requiring us, we do have annual trainings by law that are required, and the attorney can probably go into that. I know we've discussed it at the council meetings before. And to say that anyone who may not have the social economics income to pay to go down to, I think, our trainings this year for all of the required trainings that we have to get annually as down in Long Beach, not everyone's able to afford that. I have the income in order to pay to go down there, and these are required trainings that are required by law. It's not something that we just make up and say, hey, let's go hang out. Um these are updates on laws, um and to make sure that we're being accountable and with the information that's needed um to serve our community as well. Um it requires both the legal, um when it comes to education, and making sure that everyone's able to go and get the required education. Um and I think some people do have travel limitations. They may not have a vehicle. They may not have the income. But it also creates a power dynamic where only those that have money or power are able to do this education or be elected. And I think it's important that even those that may not have the income or those that may feel they are powerless know that they can have the power and still have the ability to be in this seat. Um even if they don't have the money or the medical benefits, I know not all employers offer the same medical benefits. Some people are self-employed. Some people don't have these same benefits. Um so I think it's important that we don't hinder the ability of the councils to still be effective, meet the state requirements when it comes to our educational and legal requirements, um but still being transparent regarding it. And regarding similar cities that are in similar or smaller size, I looked at Danville, which is about forty-two thousand people. They get a stipend of twelve-hundred-and-sixty-one-hundred dollars a month, plus they get retirement benefits. City of Campbell, again, similar in size, they get nine-hundred-and-ten dollars a month plus full benefits. City of Los Banos, they're right about where we're at. They're at four-hundred-and-sixty-six plus full benefits according to their council website. So it's not that I'm advocating for higher benefits, but I think it's important that all the information is provided and that the information is um accurate. Um similarly, Planning Commission, they don't meet every month, but they're still receiving their same stipend every month. You don't see the planning, they haven't met for months, but they're still receiving their monthly checks. All of them are receiving it, so I don't think that's necessarily any different, but I think it's important that we uh maintain equitable representation and support those who decide to uh be active and choose to support the community regardless of their social economic status. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalinda. Is there any other additional comments by the council? So now we're looking for consensus left to right. Yes or no? No? We only have one, yes. Thank you. Moving on to reports. Oh, you have a referral?
Yeah, sorry.
Confused with what you said. Rosalinda has a referral. I was getting rid of the jumping reports.
I know, that's why I was trying to jump in when you were ready. Um I guess I've gotten a couple of calls regarding the fishing. And um I guess there might have been some misinformation. I don't exactly know, because again, the park was open prior to me being elected. Um from the calls that I've been receiving, it looks like I was told that the pond's been there for twenty-five years, which even when my son was playing soccer for all those years, I did not realize the pond was down there, because we do like to go fishing. We usually go out to the River Laird Park out by Grayson. Um so I'm just kind of wanting to verify the information, and if that's the case, maybe find a way. I don't know if the water is under the clearing. And if that's the case, maybe find a way, I don't know if the water is under the Clearing Water Act, um, if we need to do certain reportings, if we can do a catch and release, maybe if something like that. I don't know if we have a way of restocking it and making sure they're healthy. And maybe also if that is the case, maybe also putting a sign that says, no eating or killing any of the wildlife or animals, because I know we have rabbits and other animals out there as well. And I know people like to go hunting. Don't want to necessarily, you know, throw everything out there because we do come from a family that does do hunting. So I grew up eating rabbit that my grand, my father, my stepfather went and retrieved and killed for us up in the mountains. So with that said, I think if that is something, again, I don't know the history. This is just phone calls that I've been receiving, talking to the community, um, and seeing if this is something that's even feasible. Because again, I don't know the history, I don't know all of that. I didn't know that was even down there and access accessible because it was always closed during soccer games. So I don't know the history and I'm just going from what I've been told from a lot of members from the community that have reached out. So I just wanted to see if this is what the history was and what is feasible and what will not be feasible for that area. And if that's true, if that's what we were doing, then there's no reason why we shouldn't do what we've been doing for the last 25 years, unless there's a legal stance or reason why we can't do it, such as the Clean Water Act or something of that sort. Thank you.
Left to right? You okay with the referral? This information?
It's just a referral, sir. There's no consensus.
There's no, it's not necessary for us to.
No, he'll, he'll come back.
Not tonight, it'll come back at the next.
Sounds good, just wanted to make sure. Okay. She knows the process. Okay. Reports now, so I do not have a report, but look, you are the prices right. Got it. Rose Linda Viera, you are first, and there's no other red lights.
Happy Halloween at the end. Well, the S H A meeting this month was canceled. Um, but like I know Amin was here earlier mentioning regarding the groundbreaking with Tuscany Village, um, with the help of San Luis County Housing Authority Jim Cruz, who reached out to me this morning, who is very excited. Um, we're happy to bring affordable housing homes here to the community. Um, we also have, are you going to mention the Halloween? No, I'm going to leave that to Daniel, um, with the community event. So I just want to make sure we're starting to take the reservations for the Christmas tree lane. If you want to be part of the parade, it is open to the public. So please do not feel that you don't have to be, if you want to be a part of the parade, more than happy to have you here as well. And I guess that's it for me. We look forward to going down Long Beach to get updated on my required trainings and legal requirements. To make sure I'm still representing the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez, you are up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Rose Linda, for not uh stealing my thunder on that one. Uh, I just wanted to remind everybody that Saturday, the 19th, uh, Joey and his crew are going to put on our, our annual trunk or treat. They do an awesome job every year. The amount of people that come out, the amount of faces and fun that's had. I don't have the hours in front of me, if you wouldn't mind, sir, I had to put you on the spot, just, is it one to four?
Yes, you're correct, one to four Saturday.
One to four Saturday, so I look forward to seeing everybody in the community. I look forward to seeing all of the, the booths and everybody coming out and having a great time. And then I also just wanted to mention, and I believe the mayor might be able to speak on this one, but we do have our crosstown rivalry parade coming up. Uh, and I know that the school district is asking more people to attend this year. They're asking more people to come out, set up chairs, watch the parade, uh, encourage our youth and our athletes. Uh, so I'm looking forward to writing in that again this year, but I'll, I'll let the mayor speak on that, on the date and, and time of that event.
I was talking to Doug earlier about this, so the parade will be on the 26th. So I hope everybody goes out there. And then after the parade, we always come back as a council, we, we have our picks. And then after the game on the first November, I will bring back the winners of the crosstown showdown. So that is going to be the process, and I think that is, it's awesome. So I expect uh this to be a great turnout. Are we going to start early this time? Let's start early. So as you can tell, even the council loves the fact that we have this crosstown showdown rivalry and also the um parade. So, oh, thank you for pressing your button, Vice Mayor Brett Severo.
So I have a comment. As y'all know, I've lived in Series forever, and I support all of our schools. But I'm going to make a little wager with the mayor here in the football game. So I was once a Bulldog, always a Bulldog, played football, my kids went to Series High. I'm going to challenge him as a football coach of Central Valley. If at the meeting following the crosstown showdown, if Central Valley wins a Barcy football game, I'll wear a C V shirt up here on the dais, and I challenge you to wear a Series Bulldog shirt if Series wins.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right, that's good.
Somebody needs to order that. All right, anybody else? Mr. Casey? Okay, Mr. Casey is good. With that being said, we will now adjourn this meeting and go to a closed session for a conference with public employees' performance evaluation, government code 54957, for city manager and city attorney positions, followed by the conference with legal counsel, California Government Code 54956.9 regarding anticipated litigation for the potential case. Lastly, a conference with legal counsel for existing litigation, California Government Code 54956. The name of the case is Berlir versus the city of Series. Police Chief Christopher Perry, San Luis County Supervisor Court, case number C S 24007723. If there's anyone in the public who would like to speak regarding this closed session matter. Seeing none, I will now go uh to closed session and then we'll report out when we're done. Thank you.
Welcome back. There's no reportable items on any of the, I mean no reportable actions on any of the items. Thank you.